Two nice little articles. I read those, too. Thank you, Mike. I always enjoy reading your articles.
Thank you.
They're always kind of poignant, you know, to what's going on.
And they're interchangeable. Council boards, elected boards, no.
They're not long, right? They do a nice little bullet points.
All right, it's 6:30, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting into order, and I'll make a motion to open the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All perfect. Michael, do you want to give us the town administrator's report? And as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by Marshfield Community Media.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll give you my town administrator's report. I had a meeting with Fred Russell, our facilities director, regarding some mastic abatement at the library. We're taking a look at possibly replacing the rug there. So we had to bring in Vertex to take a look at the mastic underneath to make sure that it's not hot. So we're going through that process. We had our weekly owner, architect, contractor meeting on the police project, dealing with demo of the old police station and a number of landscaping issues that we're working on. Working on a security location for early working on securing a location for early voting at the Congregational Church Hall. Been working with Reverend Bartlett, so when people go to vote, they'll be going to the first Congregational Church Hall parish to be able to vote like they did about four years ago. So that's going to work out really well. Sent out a flyer, a national opiate awareness event for August 31st, working with Marshfield Facts, working with Fred Russell, facilities director, to illuminate Town Hall in purple for August 31st. Purple is the color that for National Opiate Awareness Day, Town Hall will be illuminated from sunset until midnight. Working on making arrangements for the final payment to neighbor works on the veterans' housing project. We have to release $198,380.97. Have notified the Marshfield Housing Partnership. I'm waiting for the chair to schedule a meeting to make the vote so that we can release those funds. We've already contributed $401,619.03. Town meeting authorized the $600,000, so that's the balance. Did an interview with Catherine Kniff at Patriot Ledger regarding National Opiate Awareness Day and what Marshfield is doing in recognition of that. And I get into, in the article with her, about the flags and how 195 more people passed away from opiate overdoses in '21 than they did in '20. Had a meeting with the M. Bastille, Town of Conleton, and Lisa Clark, treasurer, collector. We're working on the FY '24 budget and DPW indirects. Had a meeting with Jim Bunnell, executive director of the Boys and Girls Club. We're working on the 9/11 event at the Boys and Girls Club that will take place on Saturday, September 11, 12 noon. And we're participating in a national program with Global Youth Justice. We're one of the locations in Massachusetts, I believe, one of two locations. And we'll be reading the 65 names of people from Massachusetts that perished on 9/11. So hopefully, I'll be sending out something for the board to come and a number of different people to come and read. We'll be inviting the police and the fire to do the presentation of colors and all the scout groups to do presentation of colors. And we'll have speeches and try to keep the program with the reading of the names to about 90 minutes at most, somewhere between 60 and 90 minutes. And then we'll do a little collation under the Marley Pavilion there to round it out. Had a meeting with Mr. Kilcoin to review some issues of concern that we were working on. Had my department head meeting. We're updated the department heads on special town meeting, the joint meeting on the 20th of September, the warrant, the telecommute policy, the Crown Act website. I asked everyone to review their own websites, make sure that their boards and commission names are appropriate and the terms are appropriate. Make sure if they have elected boards that the names and dates are appropriate. Also, I want to get the photos updated on the Town Hall. Anyone that comes in, we have them monitored. Just make sure that we have current pictures. Quite honestly, I'm tired of looking at myself in that. I think Steve, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, you and I are out there in the winter with the snow and the freezing cold. I got the green scarf, so that we can probably move on from there. We talked about the employee appreciation luncheon and records management. Had a biweekly police building committee meeting where we approved some change orders. Then again, discussed some landscaping issues. Had a meeting with Robert Kuhn, our Town Hall architect from Sokotek, who's the engineer and architect on the renovations for the four new bathrooms, the update to the chamber, and a few other things that we're doing in Town Hall. Participated in the Economic Development Seminar with MAPC and the Planning Board. Select person Fiddler was there and select person Kilcoin was on the Zoom. Had a meeting with William Druin, our assistant director with the Board of Health. Working there, Board of Health received the grant. I know that the boards are aware of. It's for six towns and it, William is sort of spearheading the whole thing. He'd put the application in. It's about coordinating services, the ways that these six towns would share in restaurant inspections and various Board of Health activities. One of the things they need to do is, we discussed hiring a person that would be funded out of the grant that will work for the six towns for 19 and 1/2 hours per week to manage their activities. I had a meeting with Mike Veraki and Greg Gaiman, our planner, regarding some development projects that are going on in VRT's property, in particular, the school that's being built up behind the Boys and Girls Club. Had a meeting with the DPW to discuss their articles for special town meeting. Participated in a workshop, a two-hour workshop, on substantial damages and substantial improvement determination for floodplain structures. It was very interesting. I don't want to say it was dry because it dealt with flooding issues, so. Had a budget meeting with Ann and Lisa to put together our schedule for meeting with our department heads. Ann for meeting and discussing indirect charges with the DPW. Attended the Poppy's Luncheon at the DAV. It was the first year anniversary of the Poppy's. That was the group of spouses that Karen and Lisa put together so that they can get together and talk about all the challenges that they face and have somebody else that's, you know, sharing in those same issues. So they had their luncheon at the DAV on Friday. It was a nice group, about 40-something of them, for Chinese food at the DAV. Senator Patrick O'Connor stopped by to say hello. Worked on the draft of a 40B letter that the board will take up later, be sent to the ZBA. I did a flyer and press release for the listening tour, reminding folks that the Selectman's Listening Tour is Wednesday night, August 24th, at St. Anne's at 7:00. Drafted a press release on the Seaport Economic Council grant for $192,000. Mike DeMayo and I went down to Chatham to see the lieutenant governor in the Seaport Council and pick up our check. Signed a new cleaning contract for Town Hall, the library, the rec, and the police with SBS. We went out to bid, put a nice bid package together. And SBS was the lowest most qualified bidder, and they started cleaning in the building last week, so. Working on finalizing DSA site testing. That will take place in September. Meeting with Greg Gaiman and hazard mitigation. Woods Hole Group, we are required by the state to continue with the hazard mitigation plan, so we're going to be updating the hazard mitigation plan that we have in place. And we've just signed a contract with Woods Hole to do the next phase of that. Working on permitting the Council on Aging carports. Working tonight, I'll discuss with the board, putting together a housing symposium for October 6 at 7:00 at the library. And finally, clinic updates on the clinic returning to the fair. We've been, we'll be participating and administering shots sometime the end of September. We put our order in for the new medication. New medication for vaccine booster will also have the flu in it. The Department of Public Health is hoping of the 5.4 million people that have already received the vaccine that 80% of them will get this new booster that has a combination of both. And that is my town administrator report.
Great, thanks, Michael.
If you'd like, I can do the clinic.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Sure. So we'll jump right in. We've administered so far to date 1,548 vaccines at Town Hall, averaging 10 to 15 patients per day. And between the, as folks know, we're doing ages 5 to 11. Last week, we had seven children show up to get their shot. So once school gets going, we expect that number to pick up drastically. And we're going out to bid for our services because we have to get the tents in place and all the setup, as you know, Mr. Chairman, at the fairgrounds. So we're moving ahead with that. And then if I may take one quick moment, there's a blood drive that's taking place this week. Teresa Flynn, who's our nurse from the Board of Health, put together a blood drive again this Wednesday, August 24th. Town of Marshfield sponsoring a blood drive in connection with the Kraft Family Blood Donor Center, Dana Faber and Brigham Women's Hospital. Blood donation will be done at Marshfield Town Hall in the Kraft Family Blood Mobile. All of the blood collected will go directly to helping patients at those hospitals. Right now, there's a critical shortage of type O, which I believe is the most common type, but all blood types are welcome. We have a few appointment slots left, and we'd be able to take a limited amount of walk-in appointments. Everyone who donates will receive a $10 gas gift card and be entered into win a fabulous basket made by Town Hall's Donna Marcela. Please go to the Marshfield Town website, click on "Blood Drive" link under News and Announcements to schedule an appointment or contact Teresa Flynn at 781-834-5565. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Michael. And do we have a police detail to keep vampires away from the Blood Mobile?
We could. Our police chief's here this evening.
You need more garlic to dip ammunition in.
And mirrors.
Yes. That'll be the screening process. You show up in the mirror. Do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Awesome. All right, Phil, we will take 13 out of order, if that works for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Of course. So we're just going to do a review and update on issues in the Green Harbor Beach area with updates from Chief Tavarez and our town administrator, Michael Maresco.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me in. I appreciate it. I know it's a busy summer. So this is just a follow-up from our last board meeting where there was a woman that came in that had a petition stating that there were numerous problems down at the beach. As reported at the last meeting we had, I'm proud to say that most of the major problems were reduced or completely eliminated well in advance of the last hearing. Although we continue to check the beach on a day-by-day basis, shift-by-shift basis, both with uniformed officers and plainclothed officers. And they continue to do their patrols in the area for speeding, illegal parking, underage drinking, so on and so forth. So it's been really quiet. I mean, it's a busy area, but as far as like real major problems, it's been really quiet for us. I have not heard from anyone since the last hearing that we had here, with the exception of the petitioner, who sent an email to me that I forwarded off to the town administrator. It was sent on Wednesday, last Wednesday, August 17. And she states that things seem so much better at the beach and everyone is so grateful. However, she has requested a stop sign at the intersection of Kearswell and Marginal Street. And she also requested that a dead-end sign might be helpful on the corner of Kearswell slash Dead End Side. And that she would request some speed limit signs on Bay Ave and Marginal Streets. And in addition to that, seasonal speed bumps. In regards to the dead-end sign, I would be in favor of that. I can see how somebody that's not familiar with the area might go straight and they'll end up down into the marsh, which would obviously be problematic. So that, I would say, would be an easy approval. And obviously, the work would have to be performed by the DPW. If they have the sign and the crew available to do it, I would definitely be in favor of that. In regards to the speed limit signs, it's a little bit of a double-edged sword there. For an example, there is, the speed limit is not posted on Marginal Street. In a thickly settled district, by state law, the speed is 30 miles an hour, which I think is extremely fast. For that road, I think it's fast for Bay Ave, Bay Street, Beach Street. I think 30 miles an hour is very fast. So if you put 30 mile an hour signs up on Marginal Street, sometimes people think they can go 35. Where it's not posted, I would think that, I would hope that people would travel slower than that. So I, I'm not sure that speed limit signs would do us any favors. In regards to the stop sign, that is governed by the state. And stop signs are traffic control devices that drivers come across regularly. The function of a stop sign is to improve the safety and operation of intersections by defining who has the right of way. Since stop signs have considerable control over traffic, they should be installed only when necessary. The manual on uniform traffic control devices provides guidelines for the installation of stop signs. Unwarranted stop signs may create problems either at the intersection or along the roadway itself. And that's, there's numerous pages here that indicate what is required. And a study would be required to see if it's going to improve the safety there. So if the DPW wanted to do that, I'm in favor of anything that would improve the safety on any of our roads. And then I believe the last thing would be speed bumps. And I haven't heard from anybody but the petitioner on that. I know that there was an online question on the Marshfield Forum that asked a bunch of people, would they be in favor of it? And it seemed to me that the majority weren't going to be in favor of it. So if it's something that the residents want and it's something that would improve the safety, that should be looked into as well. That's basically all I have. Things seem to be functioning well down there, and we're always looking to improve things. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has. If anybody has any questions.
Okay. Jim, anything you would like to add, Michael?
Mr. Chairman, all I want to say is that, you know, since this issue was first brought up in May, the police department, the chief, and his team's done a fantastic job. You know, we did have a few group of kids come in on that particular weekend, and they were unruly. And the police, right away, educated them. Told them if they wanted to continue to come there, then they would have to behave. If they can't behave, they're not welcome, quite honestly. And, you know, we had the meeting here. The chief's followed up. He's looked into all those other things. And it's been relatively quiet, safe, and serene at the beaches like it's supposed to be.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
Chief, just a couple of quick ones, if I may.
Sure.
So the 30 mile an hour in densely populated, whatever the correct term was.
Yes.
Is there any home rule flexibility?
Yes. If the town adopts, and I'm not sure if they have, Chapter 90, Section 17(c), and we'd have to check with the town clerk on that, then there's a process, I believe. I'm not sure if it's a town meeting vote or if it's a vote of the board of the Select Board, where they could reduce speeds on streets down, the lowest is 25.
So the lowest we could go would be 25?
Correct.
To me, it just seems like it needs to be like 15 or 20 down there.
I would agree with you. I would completely agree with you.
I think almost like foot on brake with kids and balls and all that stuff. So that may not achieve the goal either, then. That's still pretty fast.
Yes, I agree.
It gives visibility that you can go that fast, right?
Yes.
And some people think five over.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
And also, you talked about speed bump look into. I did see on the forum as well, it seemed a preponderance, and I was surprised at this, were not for the speed bumps. Now, I don't know if they viewed those as like permanent bumps that they'd put in because a lot of them talked about snow removal and this or that versus temporary. You said, you know, that might be something to look into.
Yes.
What would that process be in your mind?
So the speed bumps would be purchased by the DPW. So I'm not sure that they have any spare ones, but there is a list that was put together of places that have already requested them that have gone without them, which includes the Esplanade.
So the determination for placement, that resides with DPW?
I would say in conjunction with, their engineers in conjunction with the police department.
Okay. All right.
But they would have to, they would have to actually have the product. My guess is that they don't have it, so they'd have to make some purchases.
So if the residents wanted to follow up on that, then the correct pathway then would be to the elected board of DPW?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jim. Do you have any questions or comments, Lynn?
Just the traffic studies. Are you aware of any traffic studies in that area?
Not in that area, no. I
In history?
I, I did a search of accidents on Marginal Street in regards to the stop sign. And apparently, there might have been more than one, but we could only find one that happened actually this year. And it was by Landing Road. It was not at the intersection of Kearswell and Marginal. And it was, somebody was slowing down to turn into Landing and another person on Marginal hit them. So a string search showed, indicated to us. I'm hearing there might have been one other accident that we couldn't find, but we did a thorough string search over the last five years to see what kind of accidents have been on Marginal Street. The second one that I'm referring to possibly could have been logged as a property damage because it was somebody that hit a fence and took off. But as far as a car accident, we only found one in five years, and that was not at the intersection of Kearswell and Marginal. It was at Marginal and Landing. In regards to a study, a study would have to be conducted like the one the DPW did up on Grove Street to determine if the four-way stop was an appropriate location to improve the safety. They would have to do pretty much the same thing.
And is that dictated by what you just described as far as number of incidents?
Yes. Not only that. It's not just
Other parameters.
Yes, yes. Not just limited to that. There's a lot of, the criteria is really large.
Right. And DPW, I'm guessing, would be spearheading that type of a traffic study on their own, correct?
Yes.
That's it.
Thanks, Lynn. All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to look into the feasibility of purchasing and installing speed bumps on Bay Ave and Beach Street. The town administrator is asking to work out the details for speed bumps for next year with the DPW superintendent. The police chief is asking to further explore the installation of a stop sign at the intersection of Marginal and Kearswell. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Could I just, for clarification, I'm not sure that they read, if it's read into the record that Marginal Street was also requested for speed bumps?
Oh, good catch. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
And with the addition of Marginal Street as well.
Temporary speed bumps.
Correct.
Temporary speed bumps.
Thank you. Chief, I appreciate you looking into it. You know, we want to be responsive to the citizens. If they come in and they have concerns about the particular neighborhood, we have to look through it because sometimes there's, you know, the law of unexpected consequences. Like you talked about with the speeding, where people would be able to say we can go faster if we want to. And that would be opposite of what we want to achieve.
Right.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Awesome. All right, John, did you or Jay draw the straw shots tonight? You have to stay after the presentation because you're just one of you has to stay for the meetings, right? Or do you both have to stay tonight?
I thought it was none.
Oh, you both get to leave. Even better.
Yeah, John's here to answer any questions we have as we go through the three policies.
Yeah, I just didn't know if one of them stayed like in the Zoom room in case there are any issues. But you both get to leave. I'll take you guys right now. Sorry to keep you waiting.
We're going to have someone
Yeah, they monitor it.
Just to keep an eye on things.
Yeah. All right. Well, we'll tackle you guys and let you. So the first action, yep.
So just to brief the board on this. So there are three technology policies we would like the board to approve. These were drafted by Meyer. This is really to answer all the questions. And Marshfield's ahead of the curve on this, but to answer the questions on records and, you know, having nefarious people come in and hijack all of our files and want to charge us, get through our firewall. John and his team's done a really good job. The board's been extremely supportive. Last year, he approved $750,000 worth of oppo money to really shore up the firewall, make sure that, you know, we have the proper protections. These go a step further. These update. We had like a very small policy. These actually could be combined all into one. Meyer put them out. When Labor Council looked at them, most city and towns have them all into one. So we had Labor Council look at them because they, in fact, they affect our personnel, and we instruct the personnel on things they have to do. So the first one is, and I'll just overview and then questions you have. John's the real expert on this. But the first one deals with email policy. And basically, this policy defines the standards of rules for acceptable and unacceptable use of the Town of Marshfield's email system and ensures the proper use of the system. The second one is an IT acceptable use policy, which goes a little further than the email one. This policy describes the acceptable use of the Town of Marshfield's computer equipment by complying with directives set forth below employees' help to protect the Town of Marshfield from risk of malware attacks, compromise in the network, system, and services, and legal liability. John works with all of our employees. They're supposed to be taking constant tests. And I will tell you, the tests are really hard. And when you get them, you know, it's the first thing is, the biggest thing is, and people see it's always phishing is how this all starts. So you get a thing, and sometimes it might be like a friend of yours that will have your friend's name. But if you look, it's, their email is in some foreign country, nowhere that your friend would be. And it's to get you to look at the whole thing. And, you know, people constantly make mistakes, so we're looking at that. We sort of get into this policy a little. Mr. Dassey, you might remember when we had COVID going on and we had people working from home, we put a sort of a boilerplate, very generic policy that you needed to only go to the appropriate sites. Needless to say, no more. Okay. And then the third one is the Marshfield Information Security Incident Reporting Procedure. And what this is, all potential information security incidents involving sensitive information should be reported immediately to a member of the Marshfield Information Technology Team. If you don't already know your organization's process for reporting data security, you find out now. So, and John's constantly updating people on what they're supposed to do, what happens, and consequences. So with that, John's here to answer any questions.
Yeah, perfect. So if I get an email from Maresco with two Cs, don't open it?
Right.
Um, no. No. And if you actually notice the email that it has two Cs in it, good for you. That's not a real common thing around here. I wish it was. It would cut down on all phishing scams, but, you know, I digress.
Yeah. What are some of the most common formats that you see for the phishing scams?
A lot of them are just like requests for information. Like we had one today that would just say, verify, this is information. It looked like it came from the state, but if you look at the email, it came from outlook.com. It's like, that's not the state. So that's, it's a lot.
Some of our employees are getting, you know, our employees overall, the more training that they do, the better they're getting. It's, you know, John constantly sends out reminders, which is important because when people have a few minutes of downtime, they need to be doing these exercises because it really gets you to start to think. Because sometimes it will say like the Commonwealth, like John said, the example Commonwealth of Mass. But when you look, you know, it's, you know, Bangkok, you know. It's not even in the United States. So you have to look at the full email address.
Yeah, so true.
And if you don't know the person, you shouldn't answer it. You know, just delete it. Don't open it. Worst thing to do is to open it. John tells everyone, don't open it.
Yeah.
A lot of times, people will see emails that come in, and they'll just see who it's from. They'll stop thinking from there and just fire it open and do whatever they say. And then like, oh, I thought it was someone You take an extra second to look at it. It's like, okay, why is this person asking me this obvious information? Should raise some red flags. With all the recent actions, we're going to be doing security training forever. So that's not a problem.
And I will say, Mr. Chairman, our system, John's done a great job with the firewall protection because I'm reading some article that's a legitimate article in a legitimate newspaper. All of a sudden, the alarm on my computer's going off. So like, John could hear it because he's next door. So I called John. John, I'm on this article, the New York Times. Can you come over? I don't know. Saying that there's, you know, something out there. So John, come over and it's, you know, they're very sensitive. They pick up on stuff. It was, it was great.
And I could say too, if you're in Google or whatever search engine you have, you don't have an ad blocker installed, I highly recommend getting an ad blocker. They have them for every browser. A lot of times, if you search for a news article, the first couple results that come up are advertisements. And most of the time, like, you know, it happened to Michael and a lot of folks in Town Hall. If you click on it, it may start to load as a legitimate site, but then it goes to that, you know, fake hoaxware. you know, fake hoaxware, starts yelling at you, saying, don't touch anything. It's like, no, you can, you can close it, it's, it's a fake.
Yeah, so you recommend DuckDuckGo as a good privacy browser and pop-up blocker?
I've been hearing questionable things about DuckDuckGo lately, so I, I really can't endorse anything. I think they're, they're all kind of necessarily evil, so it's just be, just be careful and cognizant of what you're looking at.
Makes sense. Do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
I'm just concerned that I'd add a ad blocker to my computer, which would be a phishing.
No, they're all free.
Because it's free, oh, that seems good. But it ends up being a phishing.
Yes.
I, I read the policy two or three times. There's, there's policies, there's a lot in there.
Yes.
They look fairly comprehensive. I mean, I, I know this is a somewhat moving target, it's, it will never end.
No, no.
It's, you do something, they do something, you do something, they do something, but the policy, policy as far as how employees go, it can be more consistent, more living. I did notice there's some signup pages, and I, I think Michael spoke, you spoke about some, some training as well, some type of exams, so there, there's training as well, it's not that they just have to read it, there's gonna be some training?
No, there, there's constant interactive training.
Great, thank you. I assume there was, but I just wanted to verify that for the public. How, how, how would you envision the new remote policy? We're gonna have a lot more town employees maybe having town devices and have access. Will it just be more of the same, or will it present new challenges? What's your, what do you envision that happening?
A lot of it's gonna be more of the same, at least for the remote work policy. Folks are gonna be using their issued laptops to remote into their town computer. So, really, they're all going through the same channels, they're going through the same filter, same firewall. So, a lot of those challenges are kind of mitigated. It's just when we get into, you know, their home PC, their, their personal doings on their internet, that's when it can get a little, little gray. Because I, you know, I can't control what, what people do at, at their home and on, on their internet, I just control what happens when it gets here.
So, you kind of envision it to allay the public maybe concerns that, you know, there's gonna be a lot more devices out there from the town, it would maybe make us more susceptible. It's really just an expansion of, of the existing security with more devices rather than, than presenting major new challenges?
And I mean, and the folks have had, you know, work-from-home equipment since COVID started, so we, we've been remoting since then, and, I mean, we really have had no major issues, so I'm real, real fortunate about that. We do, do, we do, do a lot of training. What's good, a lot of the folks, when they're at home, they just go on the issued laptop to do the work they need to do and get off it. So, there's really not a lot of, any, any monkey business.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up on Mr. Kilcoin with, John, maybe you can just mention about the dual authentication?
And as part of the Opera monies that we received, we did implement two-factor authentication. So, that way, it hasn't been rolled out to everyone yet, but when, when it does, they'll be, whenever they go to log on to the VPN from home or, you know, wherever, hotel, airport, they'll go to sign in, they'll get a pop-up on their phone or their device, they'll say, is this you? And you approve it, and then off you go. Gives a lot more securities.
Definitely.
Can impersonate other people.
Excellent.
And I could also add on too, we're having a security speaker, Robert Siciliano, come in next month to give us a good security presentation. I know he came in a couple of years ago. He's a, you know, bestselling author, security professional, safer.me is his website, and it's, it's gonna be a great opportunity for the, for the town employees to.
Some of the ransom situations, some of these towns have gone in and cities and companies is devastating.
Yes.
So, thanks for staying on top of it, Jim.
And it all, it all really comes down to having good backups. There was, there was some country or someone that got ransomwareed, and, you know, they were like, all right, give us this money, and they, you know, basically told them where to go, because they, they have backups, they can just delete the email that they want money, and no one knows any better. So, backups are very key, ever.
Thanks, Jim. Any questions or comments, Lynn?
Just a quick comment on the challenges that you face daily, hourly, by the minute. So, when there's a security or some sort of situation that you're dialed in on, does, is there a procedure in place that allows you quick access? I mean, I'm sure you're right to Michael, but is there, can you just explain that very briefly, of course? So, we could do it at another time if the chair is so inclined.
We, we could certainly go into that at another time. A lot of it is, is really just situational.
Okay.
It's, it's really broad how to, how to respond to it. I mean, for instance, if there is like a, like a ransomware hack, you know, it would just be to shut down the affected services, find out where it's coming from and stop that, because most of the time, there'll be one workstation computer that someone clicked on, and that workstation is what's going out and locking everything down to. Once you isolate that, you really kind of can just mitigate the problem from there.
Okay.
But of, of course, it'd be to go to Michael and, you know, the appropriate authorities if necessary.
Okay.
And I know, get the, get the chief involved and go from there.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, appreciate that information, thank you.
Thanks, John, thanks, Jay. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the information technology policy update by the IT department. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Perfect. Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, John.
All right, I'm gonna take a wild guess that Lenny is tuning in because he wants to hear about the Mill Creek letter to the ZBA. Mute and unmute twice if it's yes, Lenny. All right, so basically, Michael, we put together, it's number 16 on the agenda, we just saw a letter we put together to go to the ZBA, and I know you kind of coordinated with the town planner to kind of, you know, fact-check it and make sure we're all on the same page with our fellow boards. And in a nutshell, they're looking to do a second development, and they're looking to put more units on less land, so it'd be quite dense. So, basically, we sent them a letter that we're looking for some modifications to be made, and some of the options included some more family-oriented setup and space, things of that nature. So, if you wanted to add some more context, Michael, that would be great.
Sure, I'll just, very quickly, and then I know Lynn spoke with Bob Galvin, and in front of everyone, you'll see a sheet that has some coloring on it. This is sort of a, Bob changed just a few of the sentences in the, in the letter. But the number one concern, the, first of all, the selectmen have received probably about 50 to 70 letters from concerned citizens. Once the letter's approved in whatever format it's improved, then I'll get that out to everybody so that they know. So, the big thing is the density, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman. The, the Mill Creek is proposing to have a much denser, higher number on smaller parcel. Board of Selectments in favor of lowering that number to 186, lowering that density down to make it more in line with the other project. We're also, the board, when I say we, the board, myself, everyone, is very concerned about water pressure. When that area was designed between the planned mixed-use development and Enterprise Drive owned by the Verakis, that was more of a commercial-based businesses, where you would have people there during the day, not 24 hours, you wouldn't have people taking showers. That's now turned into a neighborhood in the planned mixed-use development. We have commercial, we have, we have housing, we have over 55, we have condos, we have the Madison, which I forget what it was called before, but they changed names now, they're the Madison. That's a big development that's in there, and now Mill Creek would be a second big development. So, you know, one of the concerns is want to make sure when people, this is a fairness issue, people go there and they turn on their shower, they want to make sure that there's water and not, you know, 500 people in the area taking a shower at once and the water's barely trickling out, and it won't take the soap off of you, so. That's an issue, you know, fencing, the aesthetics, access to the fire roads, to make sure that the fire department getting back, to make sure if there's any fires, fencing off some of the land so that people aren't either throwing things or going into the land unless they're going in there for hiking. And let me just see what else I want to mention. Those are really the, the major focal point, is the number of units, the density, the water, things like that are really the big stuff, the fire protection, the fire access for the fire department. The other thing is transportation, so now we have all of these people out there, and the one thing, you know, when you have people go, especially with, there's affordable units at the Madison, there'll be affordable units at Mill Creek, there's affordable units at the Highlands, you know, everywhere there's affordable units, the Seasons, et cetera. And, you know, one of the things that we would like Mill Creek to think about, and that is putting some kind of bus shelter, and then possibly working, whether it's with Gatra, or it's with Plymouth and Brockton Bus, to have some type of bus service. I mean, we don't have bus service, we don't have trolleys, we don't have cabs, things like that. So, we'd be asking for some shelter and for them to work with the, with the planner and work with private transportation authorities to be able to provide at least some transportation for people that have to work, maybe a bus to Green Bush. Or Plymouth and Brockton, we used to have two buses in the morning that went to Haymarket, two buses that came back in the evening from Haymarket. So, you know, I think that's, I think the board, you know, if they share that belief, I think that's something that's important also, and that's mentioned in the letter.
Yeah, absolutely. I know part of the reason that, you know, we're at this point is, you know, if a town is below the state's benchmark of 10% for the supply of affordable housing, you know, it can kind of affect the degree of control that you have in terms of shaping it, and you'll, you'll explain that better than I can. But is this gonna put us over 10% if this?
This will put us very close. I don't want to say, because remember, we did the new census, so we went down a little. Not tremendously we went down, but this will bring us pretty close. I don't want to set a false expectation. So, the rule of thumb, as you said, is if you get to 10%, there's less likelihood of a 40B coming here. But it doesn't guarantee that no 40B comes here. The one sure way is one, I think it's 1.5 or 1.8% of the open land left, if there's, and how you get to that number is you take out all the land that has CIs on it, et cetera. And there's a formula, and the planner is working on that right now. In order to make the property count, like when we buy, when we buy the marsh for flood capacity, so that that helps people that have the CRS insurance, that all has to be recorded. When we put conservation restrictions on land, in order for that to be counted, because it can't be development on that, those all have to be recorded. So, right now, the planner is going through and compiling a list of properties to make sure, and then we'll work with town council to make sure that all of those have been properly recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And, you know, my conversations with the town planner and the assistant town planner is, we'll be close, so this, this potentially could be the last big housing development, potentially, I don't want to say absolutely.
Yeah, totally. Thank you, Michael, well said. Do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
Just quick, if I may ask, Jim. Yes, I've spoken to the planner, assistant planner, a couple times, as well as the town administrator. I am very supportive of this letter that we've crafted. Michael was very articulate, I think, in expressing the concerns that are, that are outlined in the letter, so I don't want to be redundant on that. Although I do, do want to make clear that, although it seems like not a lot, 12.6 units per acre, all right, on the existing, and 14.6 units per acre on the new, at 180, that's at 186. That's a 15% increase in density. That's a fairly, I mean, if you think of increasing Marshfield's population by 15%, you'd say that's a lot of demand on our services. So, it, it, it is a significant change, so I just want to bring that out in, in addition to saying that I support the rules of the law.
Puts it in great context, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any questions or comments, Lynn?
I have a couple of comments, and then with your approval, I'll go over the minor edits that Bob had. So, I just want to, disclosure, I was the chair of the ZBA. I did, I was on the ZBA and read this Mill Creek into the record for that first meeting, so I just would like you to be aware of that. So, I do have some knowledge about it. But I also want to make sure that we all realize, and I'm sure we do, that this is an advisory letter, and the ZBA has the authority to work with their peer review, the applicant, and do the job that they need to do with the confines of the law. So, I just want to reiterate that it's not binding on the board or the ZBA, what we're, what we're saying here today. So, with that being said, I'd like to just jump right to the letter that you have in front of you, and just make these couple minor adjustments, and we can, we can move on from there. So, in paragraph three, you'll see that line three, it reads, "In preparing the site, the entire site will be cleared of trees, and there is likely to be significant earth removal." That was a edit created and suggested by Bob Galvin, attorney Bob Galvin, town, town council. So, that was the first change, change number one. Then continuing on, line five, at the very end of that line, it will read that a far greater emphasis, so that would be change number two. Far greater is change number two. And then on, one, two, three, four. Fifth paragraph, last line, it would read, "Development, comma, without adversely affecting," and adversely is the third edit that I would like to introduce to the board. Okay?
Perfect.
And that is it.
Well, Lynn, you were certainly a good choice for clerk, you nailed.
Obviously, in the first line, you also see that line, it is already crossed out for you, but it's, it's, reads general law, chapter 40B, period, and then that next sentence is deleted.
Yep.
Okay?
Perfect.
All right.
Does anyone have any additional comments or questions? All right, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a letter to be sent to the ZBA regarding the proposed Mill Creek site plan to address the concerns and request regarding this proposed development with the changes as presented by Clerk Fidler. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, Mr. Chairman, what we'll do is, we did share this letter with Kate earlier, and then before everyone leaves, Kate will print it out, because what I'd like to do is have everyone sign it tonight while everyone's here, and then we can work on getting it out to everyone that sent comments to us.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Sounds great, thank you, Michael. All right, we'll go to number two on the agenda, which is the discussion vote on the housing symposium. Do you want to go with some background on that one, Michael?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought it was important that we put together a housing symposium. There's been a lot of questions about affordable housing, do we need it? What kind of housing do we need? Why do we need it? Who benefits by it? How do we finance it? So, proposing a housing symposium to be held October 6th, Rentrice Library Program Room at 7:00 PM. The goal of the housing symposium will be to tell us what types of affordable housing is needed in Marshfield, what is the best approach, who needs affordable housing, potential funding sources, and why it matters to our business community. Sponsors of the event would be the Select Board, we'll invite the Marshfield Housing Partnership to be a sponsor, Community Preservation Committee, and Marshfield Planning Board and Marshfield Planning Department. Invited groups to participate in a piano would be Chappa, South Shore Housing, Neighborworks, Marshfield Housing Authority, DHCD, the Marshfield Housing Partnership, MACDC, it's another housing organization, Housing Forward in Massachusetts, Regional Housing Network of Massachusetts, and the Mass Affordable Housing Alliance.
Thank you, Michael. I think it's a great idea to have that, and I think folks do have a, a lot of questions, and it could be a very informative and helpful event, so it's definitely a great idea to do that. Do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
Yeah, when I was a housing liaison this past year, I was interested in, in this very thing, and Michael and I spoke about this quite a few times, so I want to thank the town administrator for putting this together. I think it will help us understand where we fit within our two-year plan, within our five-year plan. And I, I think the invited groups are an excellent list of invited groups, and I, I plan on attending the, the seminar. So, thank you, Michael, for putting this together.
Thank you, Mr. Kilcoin. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Kilcoin's point, it's time for the housing partnership to update the housing plan, so I think this will sort of be a lightning rod to, for us So I think this will sort of be a lightning rod to, uh, for us to take a look at that and make the necessary adjustments after we hear from the professionals.
Awesome. Do you have any questions or comments, Lynn?
Nope, I'm all set, thank you.
Awesome. All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the housing symposium for Thursday, October sixth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, great, action item number three, it's approving, uh, some common Vic license. We have Pasani LLC, the Massachusetts Seafood Collaborative, Mulaney's Fish Market Corp., and Tiki Turbo. Um, all their paperwork appears to be in order, and these are related to Lobster Fest, so, um, do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
I see we've gotten into the very controversial section of the agenda this evening.
Yeah, exactly.
No, I, I have no comment, thank you.
Thanks. Any questions or comments, Lynn?
No.
All right, yeah, well said, that's so true. I'll break these up into four motions, uh, so the first one that I'll do is, uh, make a motion to approve the temporary common Vic license for Ryan Palmer, uh, twenty-five Woodside Road in Medford, for Pasani LLC, for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, for Lobster Fest, for hours of operation from ten AM till five PM, pending approval from the Board of Health and the Building Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Great, I'll make a motion to approve a temporary common Vic license for Mark D. Christophero on behalf of the Massachusetts Seafood Collaborative, two twelve Norland Ave in Boston, Mass., for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, for Lobster Fest, for hours of operation from ten AM till five PM, pending approval from the Board of Health and the Building Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve temporary common Vic license for Joseph Norton of eleven Collier Road, Sin Situate, for Mulaney's Fish Market Corp., for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, for Lobster Fest, for hours of operation from ten AM till five PM, pending approval from the Board of Health and the Building Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, last one for action item number three, I'll make a motion to approve the temporary common Vic license for Jocelyn McNally of one sixty-six Elliott Street in Brockton, Mass., for Tiki Turbo LLC, for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, for Lobster Fest, for hours of operation from ten AM till five PM, pending approval from the Board of Health and the Building Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, great. Number four, it's a application for a temporary all alcohol license, also for Lobster Fest. This one's for Gainesboro Hospitality, Inc. Did you have any questions or comments, Jim?
No questions or comments, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or comments, Lynn?
No.
All right, perfect, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a temporary, one-day, all-alcohol liquor license application for Charles Hitchcock III at fifty-three Granite Ave in Boston, for Gainesboro Hospitality, Inc., for September seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, for Lobster Fest, with hours of operation from ten AM till five PM, pending approval by the Marshall Police Department and the Marshfield Fire Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Perfect. Action item number five is in relation to a temporary all alcohol license for flannel jam and the rib cook-off, and this is for the Marshfield Agricultural and Horticultural Society. Do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
No questions or comments, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or comments, Lynn?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a temporary, one-day, all-alcohol license application for Carlton Chandler for the Marshfield Agricultural and Horticultural Society, one forty Main Street in Marshfield, for the rib cook-off on September tenth, twenty twenty-two, from noon until ten PM, at the Marshfield Fairgrounds, pending approval from the Marshall Police Department and the Marshall Fire Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I'll make a motion to approve a temporary, one-day, all-alcohol license application for Carlton Chandler for the Marshfield Agricultural and Horticultural Society, one forty Main Street, for, for the Marshfield Flannel Jam Country Music Fest on October eighth, twenty twenty-two, from noon to ten PM, pending approval from the Marshall Police Department and the Marshall Fire Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, number six, this is a temporary all alcohol license for Stellwagen in relation to the rib cook-off. Do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
No questions or comments.
Any questions or comments, Lynn?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a temporary, one-day, all-alcohol license application for Stellwagen Beer Company, Mike Snowdale, for the rib cook-off on September tenth, twenty twenty-two, from noon to ten PM at the Marshfield Fairgrounds, pending approval from the Marshall Police Department and the Marshall Fire Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, number seven, this was a split decision, this was a tight vote last year, this is the pumpkin run. Do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
No.
No, I told him, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Any questions or comments, Lynn?
No.
All right. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Ninth Annual, uh, Daniel Webster School Grape Pumpkin Run, which is a five K road race on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at the Daniel Webster School, starting at ten AM, pending approval from the Marshall Police Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And number eight, uh, so they've had two, um, events, uh, without incidents so far, and they're looking to get a temporary entertainment license, uh, for October twenty-second and December third as well. And this is for South Shore Buds. Did you have any questions or comments, Jim?
Um, no, they've, they've run two already, this is the third one. It seems to be going well, they have seven hundred to a thousand people show up, um, everyone's ID'd, it's gone very well, so, um, I think it's kind of fun for the town.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. Do you have any questions or comments, Lynn? All right, awesome. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a temporary, one-day entertainment license for South Shore Buds, Ben Verga of Frozen Four Corporation, located on nine eighty-five Plain Street, for community events on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and December third, twenty twenty-two, from eleven AM to five PM, pending approval from the Marshall Police Department, the Marshall Fire Department, the Board of Health, and the Building Department. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, number nine, we don't like to charge ourselves a fee, so number nine is just a revote and request to waive the fire inspection fee for the DPW building. Did you wanna add anything else, Michael?
No, that's just basic, it's what it is, they're doing the fire, so, uh, we're not gonna charge the DPW like we don't charge other departments, so. Asking the board, only the executive branch of government can waive fees.
Thanks, Michael. Any questions or comments, Jim?
No questions or comments, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or comments, Lynn?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the request to waive the fire inspection fee for the new nine sixty-five Plain Street DPW facility for the installation of the sprinkler system. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Number ten, similar vein, but this is for the fees for the electrical permits for the school security systems. Did you wanna give any background on the upgraded security systems, Michael?
Uh, so just to keep up with, uh, making sure that our schools are very safe for, uh, all of our students, the, uh, school administration, the superintendent, the school committee work very closely with, uh, Chief of Police and our police department to make sure that we're taking every step possible to make sure that it's a safe environment, and this is just another step they're taking in upgrading, uh, all of the security. And part of that is, uh, because it's electric, you have to have pool electric permits, and we're asking that we waive for the school department the electric permit fees, which were about six hundred and fifteen dollars.
Awesome, thanks, Michael. Any questions or comments, Jim?
No questions or comments.
Any questions or comments, Lynn?
No.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the request to waive the electrical permit fees for the five elementary school security system by ESCS. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, and, uh, number eleven is a discussion and vote for a Conservation Commission representative on the CRS PPI Committee, and this would be for Joe Rain in particular. Uh, did you have any questions or comments, Jim?
Uh, excellent, um, appointment.
Do you have any questions or comments, Lynn?
No.
Would you wanna give any, any questions or comments, Michael?
Uh, just, just so folks know, so the CRS PPI, uh, Community Rating System, Public Information, and the Conservation Committee, uh, was lacking some input because they hadn't brought someone forward. Commissioner Ring, uh, is gonna step forward, and as the, as Mr. Kilcoyne said, that's gonna be a good choice. And, uh, in the event that he can't make a meeting, Bill Grafton, uh, would go to the meeting.
Thanks, Michael. All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Joe Rain to the CRS PPI Committee as the representative of the Conservation Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, number twelve is a request to use town land at fifty South River Street to park cars during the rib cook-off. Uh, did you want to add anything else, Michael?
Well, this is very interesting, so it's a parcel of land that, uh, the Fiat uses, they, there was a nineteen fifty-something. I used, I wanna say fifty-six, I'm not a hun- hundred percent sure, but town meeting, it's the little lot to the right of the fire department. That is actually town land, but the ten days of the Fiat, the Fiat gets to use that for parking. Any other time, uh, if any other group needs to use it, they need to get the, uh, approval of the Board of Selectmen to use that, and it's a very sound and good judgment to allow that to be used for additional parking, cause there'll be a lot of people coming to the rib cook-off.
Yes, definitely. Thanks, Michael. Do you have any questions or comments, Jim?
Uh, no, I'm looking forward to the rib cook-off.
You know, I will know that the chair was a judge last year, but not this year, you know? And I still approved all their permits and licenses.
So, so that's my only comment.
Do you have any questions or comments, Lynn? All right, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the request of the Marshfield Community Rib Cook-off to use the parking lot located on South River Street to the right of the Marshall Fire Department Headquarters for parking for the rib cook-off on September tenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And number fourteen is a discussion and vote on a proclamation to make September twenty twenty-two a suicide prevention month in the town of Marshfield. Did you wanna add anything else, Michael?
Uh, I just wanna say that this is a really, uh, big and serious issue, uh, facing youth in particular, and I think it's great that the, uh, Board of Selectmen is gonna take this up and bring a lot of awareness to, uh, Suicide Prevention Month being in September. There's a lot of help out there, I'm gonna get, uh, some information up on our website of where people can call, uh, if they need to talk to some professional people.
Yeah, that's great, Michael. Yeah, cause I know, uh, you know, because during COVID and in the wake of COVID, there's been a huge spike in people checking themselves into the healthcare system, and doctors and nurses, hospital are all overwhelmed, so any resources we can get to people, yeah.
Yeah, I, 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 I thought it occurred, I mean, awareness for this issue is, is huge, it's disproportionately hitting our, our youth. Um, so anything we can do to bring awareness and, and give them direction for help is, is great.
Yeah, well said. Any questions or comments, Lynn?
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the issuance of a proclamation naming September twenty twenty-two as Suicide Prevention Month in the town of Marshfield. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Awesome. And then number fifteen is a discussion and vote on a revision to the Bold Broadcasting LLC Entertainment License, and it's gonna exclude October eighth, twenty twenty-two. Would you wanna give us some background on that one, Michael?
Well, so very simply, Mr. Chairman, it came to everyone's attention that when things were being approved by the, the Fiat and stuff, they also had flannel jam, so they had the, the Harvest Light Festival and flannel jam, and they intersected on the eighth. And Lenny called me saying that we can't have both, there's no way we're gonna be able to accommodate, can the board revote? So tonight, the, the board would just be voting excluding that date. And we have backup from the Police Department encouraging the board to vote, uh, to ex out that date for the Harvest Light Festival.
Yeah, perfect, makes sense. Do you have anything you wanted to add, Jim?
No questions or comments, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions or comments, Lynn?
No.
All right. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to amend the previous vote approving Bold Broadcasting's Fall Light Show at their October, at our August eighth, twenty twenty-two meeting